This is, this is pretty cut and dry. Whereas this was like, would give a newcomer a lot of history.
This was probably, probably hired a consultant team or got some sort of funding.
Yeah, I mean, we were, we had one, SBJ.
Yep, SCJ line.
Yes, they live.
Ready?
Uh huh.
Okay, thank you. It's 5:31. I'm going to call to order the regular meeting for the Planning Commission. Today is Tuesday, August 5th. The land that we know as Squim was once inhabited solely by first peoples known as the Squallum people, represented by the three tribal governments, Lower Elwah, Clallum, Jamestown Squallum, and Port Gamble Squallum. We serve as stewards of the land within the city of Squim with the same care and consideration the Squallum, Clallum tribes has and continues to provide. This acknowledgement is a respect to the Squallum people and their history. The Planning Commission serves as an advisory body to the city council. The purpose of the Planning Commission is to provide guidance and direction for Squim's future growth through continued review and improvement to Squim's comprehensive plan, zoning codes, shoreline management, environmental protection, and related land use documents. The Planning Commission will have all of the powers and perform each and all of the duties specified by Chapter 35A dot 63 RCW as amended and set forth or amended by ordinance. Roll call. Emily, will you please take roll call?
Commissioner Coontz.
Present.
Commissioner Cummings.
Here.
Commissioner Fane.
Present.
Commissioner Abel.
Here.
Commissioner Hewitt. Commissioner LeFever.
Present.
Commissioner Mahalik.
Here.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Let's stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. Okay, approval of minutes. This is for the draft minutes from the last Planning Commission meeting on 7/15/2025. Has the Commission had a chance to look at the minutes and are there any corrections? Okay, then can I have a motion to approve?
Move to approve the minutes.
Okay, can I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor, please raise your hand. Any opposed? Nope. Okay, minutes stand approved as written. Thank you, Emily. Public comment, general public comment will be heard at this time. Each person is limited to three minutes. Um, I don't see anybody in the room that would want to provide public comment. Emily, is there anybody online?
There's no one online.
Okay, thank you. And I will close the public comment section of this meeting and we'll move on to general business, which is our 2025 comprehensive plan status update. Carla?
Thank you. Well, um, as I'm sure you're getting into the rhythm of seeing these memos, I will kind of transition to just highlighting a couple of things that want to draw your attention to. And uh, that is uh, kind of on the back page where a couple of things got shifted around a little bit in their order. So from the past memos, we were going to do climate and the resiliency chapter today, but um, the Sustainability Committee met last week and they still were providing some edits to it. So we moved that to the second meeting in August. And uh, so tonight is the Parks and Open Space chapter that when we get there, I'll give a little preface about um, it being reviewed by the Parks, Arbor, and Rec Board. The Capitol Facilities element was scheduled to go in October and I moved that up to being uh, to be reviewed in September and pushed uh, pushed down the Title 17 to um, second meeting in September 1st in October. So the, so the big, the big ticket items of land use and housing and are still being put uh, being programmed for later in the year so that Leland Consulting can, can continue with their economic analysis for housing and jobs that they are underway and doing so that we can be informed by their um, data-driven report. And the um, so then under other uh, other regu- development regulations, where Travis and I are beginning to work on updating uh, 2001, Chapter 20 dot 01, which is the procedural ordinance. And then actually since, aft- since this memo got sent to you, we have, Travis has initiated doing some, um, starting to put together a housing-focused development regulation package that we hope to bring to you by the end of the year, which will encompass all of the housing changes that the state legislature made in the last few years that are necessary for us to have implemented uh, by the end of the year. So even though the comprehensive plan might not be wrapped by then, we can at least get the housing amendments that the state legislature wants the jurisdictions to have implemented. So we're, we are working on that. So there is a bit going on as far as development regulations goes as in addition to the comprehensive plan. And then the other, other work uh, at the end of the memo here, I just want to note that we, we are scheduling our appointments with the site-specific map amendment requesters. So property owners who would like to contemplate a different, uh, will have applied for a different land use designation. We have 11 applications, as you know, will uh, one property owner has about three or four, maybe even five of those. So we'll be meeting with them and starting the conversation with uh, just at least starting the dialogue with them about what they'd like to do with their property is a map amendment, the appropriate vehicle, or can we make some amendments to the development regulations uh, that can get them what they might, where they want, might want to go. So that will start next week. Uh, and then again, let's see what else do we have here? I did, I think the only other thing was that um, oh, we met, I met last week with county um, planning director or DCD director to start the initial coordination meeting with the Squim urban growth area. So that was just kind of our first kickoff meeting. There's a bit of coordination and work to do with the county on um, they're, they're in, they need to contemplate some changing in zoning in the urban growth area in order to meet their um, income-band housing as assigned by the Department of Commerce. So they want to make sure that what they're contemplating is complementary with uh, adjacent zoning in the city limits. So very well appreciated outreach by the county and we'll continue working with them on on, on coordinating what they need to do in the Squim UGA. And I think that's it for status. Any questions that you might have for me?
Nope, no questions from the Commission?
Okay, great.
Thanks Carla. Okay, well, so let's move on now to our next item, which is under new business, and it is the draft for Parks and Open Space.
Yeah, so it's fit to, um, okay, with the Commission, I like to just make a few introductory comments, although these will be repetitive of what was in your cover memo, but just for the kind of the record. So the, this chapter started, its origin story is from the 2022 Parks and Open Space Plan. I started with that because the plan is not that old, you know, these, these um, fun, the functional plans that are done in the Public Works Department do represent a bit of effort. There's always a consultant involved and in this case, the Parks Arbor and Recreation Board is, as well as Public Works staff. And so we started with those goals and policies and I then went to the Parks manager and asked if, you know, are we good on these or do you think the PARB might want to look at them and spend some time with them? And she said the PARB would like to do that. So as you probably saw in the memo, I met with them three different times uh, over the last three months. Uh, they meet once a month. So, and they, at the end of the day, they didn't, I wouldn't say there was not a lot of rewriting, but there was some fine tuning that was done in the chapter. And if you're curious, we do have the markup version that I can email to you if you are curious. But what presents in front of you tonight is the 2022 Goals and Policies as fine-tuned by the PARB over the last three months. So, thank you.
Okay, thank you. So we'll go ahead and go through, I'm assuming everybody had a chance to look at this. And so we'll um, we'll start with the first page of this, Chapter 7, which is Plan Context, Goals, and Policies. And then it goes into Community Engagement and then um, the goals, goals and policies underneath there. Does anybody have anything on, on this page that they had questions about or input? Yes, Larry?
I just have a question on Policy 1 dot 4. It talks about joint meetings and were mentioned in there.
Yes.
And I'm wondering if that's, I mean, are we saying that they have to conduct these joint meetings periodically or? In other places, we say encourage and stuff like that, but the way I read this was kind of like hard and fast, conduct the meetings. And I don't know if that's a, something to be concerned about or not.
I think that's actually a really good point in the sense that the me, the, we did talk a bit about this policy and it's intended as appropriate when needed, right? So, but I do think the word conduct kind of conveys a more formal, um, you know, a more, a more formal action. And so uh, you know, conduct joint, periodic joint sessions when determined necessary or something like that.
Yeah, I would just, I would soften that language. Otherwise, let me know when that meeting is going to be.
Thank you. Anything else on that first page? Okay, we'll move to the second page. So how about on the second page? Does anything, does anybody have anything on the second page? I did, I did have a, oh, go ahead, Eileen.
I, I'm not sure where this question fits, but um, the Gary Oak Forest over there, is that going to be a park or a place to be or eventually when they grow? Or does anybody have any, are there any plans except to let the trees grow?
You know, the answer to that, Travis, because I don't. Good question, though.
So it, it is on private property. Um, so that would be, we, we've met with a potential developer of it and so that's part of our EO A zone up there. Um, and in all plans, conceptual plans that we've seen, a park has been proposed because they know they can't do anything with it. Um, so a park makes sense whether or not that'll be turned over to the city as a public park or they will just maintain it as, as such, would be determined during our development meetings and, and what they decided to do. But that does seem like it's on the table, so.
Okay, okay. It's a nice space and those trees are going to be real pretty.
Yep, and it's got the creek there and, and all that.
Yeah, yeah. Okay, thanks.
Okay, thank you. Um, I, yes, Larry?
Oh, did you?
Yeah, but I can, I can wait.
I just had on uh, Policy 2 dot 1, um, just the word uh, that athletic events can be a major source of tourism. I don't know, I just, it can be a source of tourism and economic development, but it's, it's not like the civic field for Port Angeles that hosts bigger events. I don't know if we want to just strike major and just say it's a source, could be a source.
Okay, thank you. Um, I had a question on Policy 1 dot 6. Prepare, Publish, and Promote a Park and Trails Facility Map and Coordinate with Local Tourism Organizations. Do, do we already, that's another thing too. I've never seen that. So I was wondering if that was a, a hard and fast, we have to do this or?
Well, I think um, I think we could soften that for sure. I mean, I think they want to.
Yeah, I think it's a great idea.
Yeah. Okay.
Um, because it, you know, that's, that's the kind of material I seek out when I visit a place. So I see the benefit to it. Um, but yeah, I did, again, the, the language is kind of like, this is what we're doing. Will?
I believe the Peninsula Trails Coalition produces trails maps that do show local parks as well. So it might be a pretty easy thing to accomplish considering the resources, I believe, already exist. Don't.
What's the, what was the name of the?
Peninsula Trails Coalition.
Okay.
They do the, the cycling apps?
Mm-hmm.
Uh, those are wonderful.
Yeah.
Yes.
Wouldn't it be helpful then to put that wording in there with Peninsula?
Yeah.
Yeah, if you're okay, why don't I, why don't we research that? And if they do, do the trails maps, then we'll, we'll kind of soften the language and then we'll insert that they're, that, you know, to support the Peninsula Trails Association's preparation of trails maps, something like that.
Okay. All right, anything else on that, that second page? Yes, Alex?
Um. When the library expansion got voted down, uh, friends of the library and others didn't give up and they got funding and able to get us a new wonderful library in, in spite of the failure in 2019, I think. Um, any chance that we can get a great water park swimming pool like Port Angeles has? Uh, work, or is that uh, something that's?
Got some money? A lot of money.
Yeah.
So I guess that's, you know, it'd be a wonderful.
For sure.
Wonderful thing to have here, but just thought I'd ask.
YMCA?
Yeah, because we had Sark and now it's the Ys. And so that, so like that was a whole, a whole thing.
Yeah.
Some ten, I don't know if it was even 10 years ago. Um, but now it is a YMCA pool, so.
Not exactly a place you could take a whole bunch of kids and close, you know?
Sark, many of the financial difficulties.
Yep, exactly.
Community couldn't even support that size of facility.
Okay, thank you. Anything else on this page?
Oh, yes, yes.
Yes, Alex.
Just for my information, on uh, 2.4, um, oh, what have we identified as the underserved areas of the city for, for new parks and opens?
Good question. So unfortunately, I hadn't, uh, we're working on that map. So it would be included in the back of this chapter, um, and your next version that you'll see of this chapter. And that's the level of service and now a map. And so the level of service is actually the next two policies regarding a walk shed. And so the goal is to have a half-mile walk shed for um, passive and informal open space and then a quarter mile for more, um, for more uh, active open space. And so we do have a walk shed map that we're developing and it is based on the current walk shed map and the Parks and Open Space Plan. So if you're curious, Alex, you can look at the current plan that's online and there's a map in there. But that will be, uh, that, that's what these policies are going to link to is, is a map that's going to show, okay, here's some areas of the city that are not within a half-mile or quarter-mile walk shed. Now, I can tell you what, what the result is going to be. It's primarily on the east side of the city. So uh, but you will see that map and that will be, and you'll be able to visually look at where the underserved parts of the city are based on this walk shed level of service.
Okay, thank you. All right, anything else on that second page before we move to the third? Okay, let's move to the next page. This one starts with Policy 2.4B. And so we'll finish that up and then go to Trails. Um, how about, how about this one? Anybody have anything on this page? Yes, Larry?
Could just consider adding uh, Policy 2 dash 7, State and Federal Programs. Just add the federal perhaps.
Sure, okay.
Okay, yes, Karen?
On Policy 2.4B, the, the first one on this page, we're talking here about a quarter-mile radius.
Mm-hmm.
Whereas previously, we had in there a half a mile radius. Are we talking about two different types of park facility uh, for these two things?
Well, um, I'm not sure the Parks Plan makes that definition quite nuanced. I will learn more about that when I start working on the Capitol Facility Plan. Um, but I am going to, although the, I wanted to send Emily the map so she could pull it up so you guys could look at it. But I am on public wifi and it is going very slow. So when I do, she'll pull it, the, the walk shed map. But your question is regarding what type of facilities and I, and I, I don't know yet, but I, but that will be part of the work that we'll do on the Capitol Facility Plan.
And I, and I imagine it's a size thing. I mean, there's the distinction for, in 2.4A for neighborhood parks and then in 2.4B, it's small special use parks. Um, and I just know on our current future land use map, we've got like three shades of green for our different types of parks. And so typically the, like Kerry Blake would be a neighborhood park and then something like Margaret Kerner or something would be more of a small special use park. Um, so that's probably a distinction, but it'd be nice to know what exactly that is, so.
No, it's a good question. Yes, Eileen?
Um, it talks a lot about partnerships and coordinating. I, I'm looking for um, the Trails Coalition or the Discovery Trail. It's, is it someplace else or? Because we are partners with them on some level, doesn't the Discovery Trail go through the city and do we have any shared maintenance or, I, I, I don't know what the relationship is with the Discovery Trail, so.
It, it does mention um, the Discovery Trail in the first 7.2.3, but it just talks about it. Says as a key regional asset, the Discovery Trail plays a vital role in this network.
Which one is that?
It's um. The kind of the narrative?
Yeah.
It's in the narrative. So Eileen, are you thinking of a more specific policy under Trails regarding the ODT?
Well, um, mention them as a real partner. We mentioned a couple of partners and I'm not sure where, I guess if it's already mentioned. Yeah, I saw that. Um, so I don't know. I mean, we are partners with them, right? Do we have some kind of agreement or does any, you know, what?
I mean, Will would probably know.
So are you asking what the Peninsula Trails Coalition role is with the Olympic Discovery Trail? So they're more, they will sign individual agreements with local jurisdictions. They're more about the promotion of the Discovery Trail as a whole. They do have maintenance personnel, but that's a fairly new addition. Um, usually it's up to the individual jurisdictions to perform the majority of the maintenance and then the Trails Coalition can kind of fill in gaps where there might be a lack of staff. I don't think, I think the county might be the only jurisdiction that has dedicated trails maintenance personnel versus, you know, it might be the road department or the parks department that maintains the trail in other areas. They're, they're a very useful resource for uh, you know, the county or the city to use. Uh, and it might be, it might be worth directly mentioning them in this. They can also look for money or uh, general promotion of the trail for funding opportunities, that sort of thing, so.
So um, if, well, First Street got all fixed up fancy with the nice bike trail and the whole road got, and that was part of our city plan to do that, but was that the goodness of our heart to help the Discovery Trail or? You know, um, I guess I'm trying to, uh, what's our responsibility or commitment to the Discovery Trail as it goes through the city?
Yep, I think, sorry. I think those are really good points in that I think I need to do a little bit more work. It is curious to me that the PARB didn't talk about that during the meetings. It was, I think I was all done with it and I was like, huh, we didn't talk about the ODT at all. So I'm glad you're bringing it up because I think we should have something in here. And I know we're talking about the ODT, but we do have a map up too that we can, I can talk quickly about too, but go ahead, Will, I'm sorry.
The end of the day, the Discovery Trail in Squim city limits is Squim's responsibility to construct and maintain and.
And, and.
Okay.
You can look back in the, at annual budgets and transfer, TIP things, and there's tens of thousands a year going into maintenance, say cycling things and just in the, in the city limits.
Okay. I, so would we have to say anything within this to make sure that continues? Or is that totally separate as long as it's in the budget somewhere else?
Oh, no, I think we should have it in here. So the, you know, it, it does fall under the transportation purview under Public Works and through the transportation, transportation budget. But as you guys, we just did the transportation chapter last meeting and there wasn't really that strong of a trail section in there. So this is really, I mean, that, we talked about active transportation and some of the kind of citywide projects, but um, we should, I think, I mean, I totally agree that there should be something in here that addresses the ODT.
It's a good thing.
Oh, yeah, yeah. I, I, I know, I was just reflecting on that with somebody where I wa- I wondered because the PARB didn't talk about it, is it something that like collectively you guys have in your consciousness just by being Squim residents or Clall- you know, Clallum County where, um, I mean, and Will, I'm sure knows this from his job, that um, getting a trail like that is ridiculously hard in other jurisdictions. And like just the right-of-way acquisition or public access easements that you have to negotiate with so many property owners, it is a gem. It is a gem that you all have. So it warrants a policy for sure.
Thank you. Karen, did you have something?
I think the association could be mentioned in 2.8, just, just like that we have the nonprofits and the Jamestown Tribe will put them specifically in there and mention it.
Hey.
Yeah, I think that's a great idea because the Trails Coalition, they, they do a lot, you know, as far as organizing events and promoting and getting, you know, they're, they're out there on the trail, you know, doing maintenance and.
Um, is it Peninsula Trails Association? Is that the proper term?
Coalition.
Coalition. Okay, great, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Um, anything else on this page?
If I can just back up for a moment and I just want to um, just to put on the, put on the screen here. I don't, do you, can you see it on your, okay, great, on your monitors. So this map just got finished today. So I apologize that it wasn't in your packet, but kind of to the question of what the walk shed is going to look like, that, that's what this map looks like. So the um, the darker orange is the quarter-mile walk shed and then the lighter orange is the half-mile walk shed. And uh, I just want to note like for Park 14, which is the latest park, the McCord Park, uh, the reason that there's not a walk shed kind of on the north end of that is because there aren't any roads that are, or trails that are connecting to it at this point in time. So it does actually, by not having something there, reflects that there's a gap in a walk shed for that park on the north side as far as from public right-of-way. So anyway, when I said that, you can tell that on the east side of town, there, that would be where we don't have a park where the city doesn't have a park that is within, um, you know, those, those, those two walk sheds. Now, those are two small walk sheds. Um, and so there would probably be, need to be multiple parks in order to kind of fill that, fill in the, the east side of town. But that's how the map is looking at this, at this point in time. Unless there's any park acquisition that happens in the next couple of months.
Yeah, okay, Dennis? And then Alex, Dennis first and then Alex?
Um, is the Fipley Center moving to the Penny's facility?
Yes.
What I thought I saw, okay, so that star will have to slide over.
Okay, so that is.
Correct.
Great, that's good to know. So that's, is that on there? What numbers?
Yeah, so the star.
Oh, it's the star, okay.
Yeah, the star will just need to go over.
Great.
Okay, Alex?
Uh, well, yeah, they bought the build, they bought it. So they own that building. So yeah, they're moving all of their operations over there as far as we know, yeah.
In the uh, Parks and Open Space uh, map. In the Parks and Open Space map. When I, oh, excuse me.
When I look at it, I think of where do the children live? And it's not very much the east side of town. And those are nice, big lots and lots of green and everything there already. But hardly anyone has children but occasional visiting grandchildren. If the school district, you know, or you put a little dot, had the same map and put a little dot, each household with a child in the school district. And I imagine it would remain kind of the same general areas or whatever. It would be really interesting to see how well we're, we're serving the needs of children. Any thought, or is that a possibility in the future or something? Thanks.
Okay. Thank you for, and I like, I think this map will continue to be fine tuned. Like I said, it's just a quick first draft, draft done today. And, but it helps for you visualize what those level service policies, how they're going to be reflected on a map. So.
Okay, thank you. All right. Are we ready to move to the next page? Okay, so the top of this page is Policy 3.3. And this finishes up with Trails and then goes into Site Design and Operations. So how about this page? Anything on this page? Yes, Dennis?
I, I made a note and I could certainly be easily overruled. But I think Policy 3.3 is very similar to Policy 2.8. Where we talk about working with these different agencies to secure trail easements and access to open space for trail connections. That's one of the kickers in Policy 3.3 that is not in 2.8. But I don't know. I, like I say, I could easily be overruled and we could keep both policies in there. But they seem very similar in nature.
They do seem very similar. Right.
Yeah.
Yeah, that, that would be.
I think the intent is the same for both of them.
Yeah. Yeah, I agree. Probably be combined just to streamline it if the PARB is okay with that. Anything else? Yes, Alex and then Eileen.
Oh.
If it's a public information in the, the West Bay projected development, is there a tie in to the Trails nearby?
The OTT does go through it, so it, that will remain there. And I think that they are planning to have a internal trail system within the master plan that will connect to their, the features within the master plan and provide connections to the OTT. You're welcome. And I will talk a little bit about West Bay under Directors Reports tonight in case you were curious.
Okay. All right. So then we have Eileen and then we'll do, we'll do Eileen and then Larry. Go ahead. So we don't really have a Parks Department in the city.
Parks Division and the Public Works Department.
So it's within Public Works.
Yes, it's Parks and Events.
Is that working or in the future? Do you think we'd have to have a Parks Department separate to continue to do good work and do things? Or is that a good spot for it?
It's the appropriate spot for it to be if it's not going to be its own department. So it's not uncommon to have parks live in Public Works. So, but having said that, it's also common to have a Parks and Recreation Department. But as a standalone department, although those are more commonly when there's a recreational programming element and there's facilities that they're managing, like a community center and, you know, or a pool or other, you know, larger recreational facilities.
And I was just thinking, I mean, this is a multi-year plan that we're working on. I don't know if in the future that would be a change or should we, you know, just wait and make it when we need it? Or, but it seems to be working on our parks are nice and, and Public Works hasn't said, get out of here. So I think it's working. Just thought I'd ask. Okay, thank you. Dennis? I'm sorry, Larry?
Yes.
Okay.
In Policy 4-1, the last sentence, it's not that I'm against tracking and monitoring costs, but that kind of reads like it doesn't belong here necessarily. It, it looks almost like that's maybe a finance function to, to do, not necessarily here. But I may have missed this in the other policies we've reviewed, but it seemed a little bit. And I just, I'm asking a question. I'm not asking to strike it, but it just seems.
Where are you? Where are you at?
4-1, the very last sentence, track and monitor costs of maintaining city-owned facilities by their function.
Okay.
Including the parks, da, 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 da. So it feels like it was a bigger statement for the whole city. And we've kind of like pushed it in here, which feels a little odd, but I don't know what the commission feels.
Can ask the Parks Manager about that. I mean, I think it might merit being its own. It's a definitely an operational type function. So this is probably the right section for it. But maybe it, depending on what they're, what they actually do, if they're.
Right. If they're in, in, you know, maybe check with them, are they actually doing anything with the tracking and the monitoring?
Yeah. And so Parks and Facilities used to be more like Hannah's role used to be Parks and Facilities Manager. And now we've got that broken out. Hannah is Parks and Events Manager. And then we have Matt, who is our Facilities Manager. So we've gotten to the point where it's growing. So it's working so well that we've actually expanded the roles for, for the department. And so it's not maybe as connected to Parks as it once was, but it's still a, a vital part of it. So.
Not connected the, the operations.
Well, yeah, I, I get, I get what you're saying. It's, it's not as directly linked as maybe, you know, it's, it's facilities could, you know, you could take facilities to mean this building, right? Like, and so how does that relate to Parks? So if I, if I'm understanding.
Yeah, I'm saying it seems like a very broad thing.
Okay, yes, Dennis.
My question's on the very same sentence. It just seemed like an awkward sentence to me. By their function, I'm not sure what that really means. Is that categorical? I mean, are we talking parks, trails, neighborhood parks, regional parks? It's really fuzzy.
Yeah. And I think that these are good questions. So I might, I suspect what it means is kind of to Travis's earlier comment about like, there is a hierarchy of parks that we're going to learn about when we do the Capitol Facility Plan. And so you have regional parks, community parks, neighborhood parks. I'm not familiar yet with what Squim's hierarchy of parks are. I will when we get to that plate, point in the comp plan development. But if I'm going to read this and infer, and I would come, I need to confirm this, is that, what is the cost by park type? So maintaining and operating Carrie Blake Park is going to be much more expensive, you know, for the park functions than perhaps a smaller neighborhood park is. So I'm going to infer that, but these are really good points that I can go back to the Parks Manager and try to refine.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Anything else on this page before we move on? Okay. So let's go to the next page, which at the top is Policy 4.4. And then goes into the section Administration and Management. How about this page? Does anybody have anything? Dennis?
Um, Policy 4.7, what is a significant cultural resource? Is it a leg bone or is it a tool to make dishes? I mean, is there a differentiation in the DAP that calls out different levels of? I mean, I just didn't know what it meant.
Using the word significant?
Yeah.
Yeah. No, I can say that I don't, I don't know either. So in the PARB, I didn't really talk too much about that other than, I mean, like when we talked about what, what could be in new parks, there was a lot of discussion about public art being incorporated into that. So I can, yeah, I could definitely go back and see if there was something specific that Hannah might remember about the 2022 Parks Plan.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay. Yes, Larry?
Could the Policy 4.4, 4.5 read very similar? And I don't know if we want to consider just merging those two. Cause it's talking about conservation and things like that. Might save, might save some ink.
Okay. Anything else on this page? Yes, Alex.
And pesticides or chemicals dangerous for runoff into Bell Creek, Johnson Creek, which end up in Squim Bay or, or, or such. Or a commitment to, to avoid those or exposure to all the children playing in Carrie Blake Park.
Yeah, this would be the section to include that. And that is, I have seen that before in Parks Chapters is something like limit the use of that as, and by, you know, there needs to be some hedge language in there as appropriate or, you know, because again, it's done by the Public Works Department and they maintain the, you know, the landscaping, the grounds, the grounds crew. So I think that if you, you know, if the commission felt like it was important to include that in there, I'm sure I can find one that from another jurisdiction that we could revise and edit.
Or are there Washington standards for that?
Is there? Okay.
Oh, maybe you could, could cite that. And is that something that's always on the mind of the Parks Department and Public Works?
Should be.
I just wondered if it is, because I don't hear a discussion of it much.
I'm not allowed to spray.
What did you say?
I'm not allowed.
Not allowed to spray. Okay.
Okay.
Okay. So maybe limit the use of that. All right. I will do some research on that. Thank you.
And I will say we, we get calls, you know, if they ever are doing something, we'll usually get calls from residents over adjacent Carrie Blake, asking what's being sprayed and stuff like that. So there are, I'm sure, I want to be sure that the, the Parks Department's aware and they're making the best conscious effort to, to do, to do right. So. Because people are watching.
Okay, thank you. Yes, Larry?
Down on Policy 5.3, this is talking about, is this just specific to Parks and Open Space? Or is this like a bigger thing and we just want to make sure the bigger thing includes parks?
Yes, that you are exactly right.
Okay.
So yeah, so the city has a six-year capital improvement plan, a CIP that's part of their annual budget and includes all public facilities and streets. And, you know, so this is the park section of the CIP. So I think that we can, we can revise those verbs there at the beginning to, to better reflect that it's a part, it's the park section of the city CIP.
Okay, yeah, I agree with that. Anything else on this page? Okay. Yes, Alex.
Just for my own education, the definition, definition of open space, wouldn't most, what we consider open space, if it's not a park, it's, it's privately held land that hasn't been developed for commercial or residential. So it's agricultural or fallow or unused. Pardon?
Keeler.
Keeler Park. No, I was just wondering if there's a definition of open space? And then how can you mandate its, its use or whatever if it's private, privately held land?
There is that in.
I'm just curious, curious on overall, the overall picture of it.
Well, open space is a, I might start and might kick it over to Travis for your thoughts, although I'm not, but between the two of us, I'm sure we can address it. So open space is a very broad term, right? And it can mean a number of different things. And so open space to the world Travis and I live in has to do with like development and a developer choosing not to develop a portion of their property and leaving it in open space, meaning it's undeveloped. But the examples you gave have to do with like a resident and the, the experience of like driving through a community and seeing some, you know, agricultural fields and seeing livestock and seeing crops and seeing wooded hillsides and having a national park. Like those are all open spaces and they can be utilized for recreational purposes, for aesthetic purposes, for providing relief to an urban experience of living in a city. And so that is a bigger, that's the bigger context of open space. And when you bring that down to like what we're talking about here in this chapter, which is Parks and Open Space, it means what does, first of all, Parks is land that the city has acquired to keep in public ownership for opens, for open space, not for development and for the recreational and amenity purposes of its citizenry. And that, so that's what we're talking about here. And so some property like Will mentioned is, and what's the name of that park? The Keeler. Yeah. So that's the one that's not developed, right? So is that, okay, right. So that may always be held in open space in the sense that it's not going to be developed for recre, active recreational purposes. It's intended to preserve that property for wildlife purposes, for veg, you know, for vegetation, for, for a relief of urban development. And so I guess, you know, I think that when people think about open space, that it's that, it's, there's this big umbrella idea of open space. And what does that now mean to like city of Squim? So the city of Squim can control open space through land acquisition. And then for the parts that Travis does every day is what does open space look like in development proposals? And does the city have requirement for that? So I don't, is there anything you want to add?
Nope. I think that was perfect.
Okay.
I actually, I kind of want to add on to that. And this is not necessarily direction to change anything, but it might be worth noting that in Clough County, under Clough County code, open space is actually a taxing designation.
Oh, that's right. There's that whole section. That's right. You want to go ahead and walk through that?
Maybe not the whole thing, but I can get a bit of an overview.
Yeah, sure.
So it can, open space can consist of anything from you have your land held in agriculture.
Right.
Or you allow public access to your property. And I believe until very recently consisted of things like you have creeks. That sort of stuff would get you a break on your yearly tax burden. So I'm not sure if people within city limits can apply to that program because they are in the county. I don't think so, but it might be worth.
No, you can.
Yeah.
It's called the Current Use. Thanks for bringing that up. It's just, I know we're getting in the weeds a little bit. It's called the Current Use Taxation Program. It's a program offered throughout the state that counties can enact and kind of customize it for their county. So as Will was saying, in, in, in Clough County, you can have it for agriculture. Like Kitsap County where I'm familiar is forestry. You can, if you're, if you're actually doing some even semi-commercial forestry, you can. And essentially what it is, is you get, like you said, you get a lower property tax bill, but you have to commit to keeping that property within that use. And then if you want to convert it out of it, you can. But then you have some tax burden that you have to pay back to the county. So we do, I do know we have some in here because we just went through our land capacity analysis. And one of the things that with our consultant Leland, and the first step is we take all property completely off the books for consideration for development if they're in this current use taxation program. There's not a lot in the city, but. If they're in this current use taxation program, there's not a lot in the city, but there are a few parcels.
Okay, thank you. All right, anything else on this page? Okay, we'll move on to the next one. Which looks like it is the last page. Besides the map. How about this one? Does anybody have anything on this one?
Yes, Dennis.
I think we should provide policy guidance in the comp plan to ensure that the Parks and Open Space Plan is periodically updated in conformance with RCO standards and certification, blah, blah, blah. But I think that's important. I, I don't think staff or the city would let that slip because it's based on a lot of funding. But I think it's important to keep that guidance in there and keep that in front of people.
That's an excellent suggestion. Anything else? Yes, Alex.
In 510. See, provide incentives encouraging developers to provide pocket parks, plazas, courtyards and so on. Has, have any incentives like that been used in the past? And did any of them choose to use that incentive? Instead of just packing in as many houses as they could?
Other than when a playground is required in like multifamily developments, that's, but there's no requirement for that to be public. So it is basically just a developer or a development benefit. If you could, if you could call it that, because most of them scoff at the idea and consider it more of a barrier to providing housing. So it has probably, to put it bluntly, it probably has not been properly incentivized to match with this policy yet, but that's why we've got the policy so that we can figure out how to make it, how to make it happen. So, but to answer your question, not in recent years. So.
All right, thank you. Anything else? Okay. Well, there we go for the draft for parks and open spaces.
Yep.
Thank you. Anything else on that before we move on to the director's report?
Anything on the map? I was just, other than moving the Shipley Center?
No, I found it looked really good.
Yeah, I may, I may have a suggestion for the colors, but there's a section of the ODT that is orange that kind of disappears behind the shading of the radius. So.
Okay.
Just pointing that out, yeah.
Actually do have a comment on this. Since the county has now added a very large county park just south of Squim City Limits on River Road and Happy Valley Road, it might be worth noting on there, the location of that county park.
Okay, thank you. Alex?
I have a question. There's a gathering grounds mark on the brown and fir intersection. It was at Olympic View Church. Is their new playground actually a, like a public playground for anybody? Or, or whatever the name of that church is?
Yeah, it's, it's private in the sense that it's not public as in the, the public doesn't own it. But it is maintained, operated by a private entity, but they have opened it to the public. So anybody can go. But I think I would say it's probably properly labeled here. But that is a good, that's a good question.
Okay, thanks.
Because we, it might be, it might be worth noting, what's the distinction between a gathering and?
Okay, thank you. All right, if there's nothing else, then we can move on to the director's report.
Okay, well, thank you. I'm here in lieu of Christina, who was not unable to attend tonight. So I do have a couple of things to talk about. I'll, I'll start with the West Bay Master Plan Project. I'm going to assume you all probably saw that it has some media coverage. So I just wanted to talk about the two things that are happening with it that are connected, but not necessarily directly related. So the first thing is, I think as we mentioned at the last meeting that we had that master plan application in. And the first step in any development proposal is making a technical complete determination. And that, that, that word, that phrasing is from state, state statute, the Regulatory Reform Act. So it's embodied in 36.70B of RCW. And it's a determination that jurisdictions make to ensure that all there is, it's slight, it's not a fully substantive review. It's a review that there is enough substance there in order to complete, to complete your technical review of the application. And so the, so the Public Works Department and DCD and myself spent quite a bit, we had 28 days to review the application. We pretty much spent a little bit of every day looking at that and determined that the application is technically incomplete, meaning that there is not enough substantive information in order for the city to adequately begin its technical review of the master plan. So a letter did go out on the 21st of July stating that it's technically incomplete and the reasons why. And that letter is posted on the city's webpage under the West Bay Master Plan website. If you're curious and you want to go read the reasons for that technical incompletion. Concurrent with the review of the applicant's proposal was a review of the city's statutes and requirements and processes of what, what the city, how the city would process a master plan, how, what, under what criteria and what statute our master plans reviewed and the zoning district of this, of this particular area as well. And the comprehensive plan policy regarding the PRC area. And there, it was a determination that there was enough inconsistencies between the comp plan, the zoning ordinance and the procedural ordinance that merit, that were, that merited a pause for the city in processing the, any master plans, any master plans that might be submitted or are submitted to the city in order for those sections to be updated and revised to be clear and consistent and provide predictability to the community, to the public, as well as to the applicant. So you may have heard that the city council passed a moratorium on Monday, the 28th. And that is a tool that the GMA provides jurisdictions to take a pause and to allow for correct, for needed updates to codes if necessary. And it can be also used in other, other ways. You may have remembered the mobile home overlay moratorium. And then that resulted in a mobile home overlay. And then the moratorium then was, you know, rescinded. So it's giving an opportunity for the city to kind of take their time that is needed to update certain sections of the municipal code. And so when I was saying that section, chapter 2001, which is the procedural ordinance has now been initiated. We've have been wanting to update it anyway. I mean, Travis talked to me about it since the, you know, proverbially the day I got here, but we've moved it up in the work plan for, for purposes to ensure that the procedural ordinance provides clarity on how a master plan shall get processed and who the review authority is. So there's, those are two things that are happening, the moratorium, and that's to provide staff time to provide, to update some zoning code and procedural ordinances and the technically incomplete technical incompletion of the application itself. So happy to answer any questions that you might have on, on, on those two pieces of West, of the, kind of the current status of West Bay.
Okay, Eileen, I know you have a question I want to ask real quick, though. Does that moratorium affect like the Habitat for Humanity project?
It does not. And I think that's a, yeah, I really appreciate that question because I think to this week, we've been sort of hearing like, okay, we, now we know there's a moratorium, we understand it. What does that mean? Does that mean every development? It does not mean every development. It only is specific for master plans and master plan overlay.
I, I had a community member ask me specifically that and I, I had said, I'll get back to you. I don't believe that any other projects are affected, but.
That's right. And Emily is actually working on updating our website for, to put some information about moratorium. And so we'll make sure we have that question, frequently asked question, like, does it affect all development? And the answer is no, it does not affect all, any, it does not affect Habitat. Habitat's already approved.
Yeah.
As well. Yeah.
All right, Eileen?
So moratorium's here and it's giving the city time to do something. Is that going to also give West Bay or Seabrook time to, to correct and complete their application? So are you guys going to like synchronize your efforts? You get done the same time they get done and then hopefully we can move forward with.
I think ideally that's what they would, they would like, that's what they are, they have communicated that that is what they would like to work towards. So they, they want to understand the technical incomplete letter a little bit better. So we, Christina is going to be arranging a meeting of all the parties so that we can maybe answer questions they might have about some of the elements that are listed in the letter. However, you know, this is, was not a substantive this review. This was, you have not provided enough information for us to begin, begin our substantive review to be on, to, you know, on a number of elements. So that is their hope that once the city completes the work it needs to be done, that they will be ready. I do just want to note two, kind of two things that is related to the work you all are doing with the comprehensive plan. First of all, there is a portion of the comprehensive plan that is related to West Bay that provides a, an inconsistency. So we, we may need to, you know, the idea, if you read the moratorium ordinance, it does speak to waiting until the comprehensive plan effort is complete. But they also acknowledge that there's some things that are going to come out of the comprehensive plan that they might want to know about. Has to do with transportation and infrastructure improvements. And so I think that there is a case for the comprehensive plan to move forward and continue doing what we're doing. And the work that the Public Works Department's doing on the infrastructure piece of it, that may have a influence on the West Bay Master Plan at the end. So.
Okay, thank you. Any questions at all for Carla? All right, thanks Carla. All right, we'll move on to Good of the Order. Does anybody have anything for Good of the Order? No? Oh, yes, Eileen.
Well, every time I have a fun thing happen, I like to share it with you all. And I finally got out to the Jamestown Library. And if you haven't been out there, it's one of the most beautiful buildings. And makes you want to read a book right away after you get done looking, but they also have a very amazing historical, cultural room that is worth going to see. So if you haven't, make a trip, road trip.
Okay. Thank you. Yes, Alex.
Yes, while you're on that road trip in the same direction, just keep going a little ways past Blinn and go up and see the beautiful County Frisbee Park. It's just gorgeous. It's so much fun to go through and it's a real treasure. Of course, it's in county land, but hey, maybe we could have a Frisbee Park in town for the kids.
Is it the Disc Golf Park?
Yeah, this, this, yeah, Disc Golf. Like I have an old timer, I guess I call it Frisbee.
I think that's very internationally known that Disc Golf Park is actually.
Really?
It's, it's so beautiful in the, being placed in the forest like it is, with each thing different. And, and actually all the, it's set up like a golf course and proper order, unlike some, some Disc Golf places I've seen elsewhere.
Okay, thank you. Anything else for Good of the Order? Okay, so let's move on.
Oh, no, I did. I forgot something. I forgot the most important thing. Oh, no, I'm so sorry. I'm, I'm laughing.
We were this close.
I'm just kidding. I know, we were this close. I'm so sorry. And Emily, you should have reminded me. I'm respectfully requesting the Planning Commission make a consideration of changing our next meeting date. Oh my goodness, I can't believe I forgot. So I have a confession that I have a pre-arranged vacation that was scheduled many months ago that falls upon the next Planning Commission meeting, which is the 19th. And I am respectfully requesting, because I like to be here in person, I certainly could attend that meeting virtually, but I think that, that I prefer to be here in person. And so if it was an accommodation that you could make, I would greatly appreciate it for the following week on the 26th.
I can do the 26th. What does everyone else think? Okay, so that would put our, that would put our next meeting on the 26th. Oh, I'm in August. I'm in, I'm in 2026 right now. On the 26th and then we would have our next meeting on the second. So we would skip two weeks and then we'd have a meeting each Tuesday for two weeks.
Yes, that's exactly right. And so we have the climate and resiliency chapter coming next, and then we would do capital facilities. And I, my intent would be to go ahead and send them in the same packet so that you have both chapters, you know, at the same time. They're, they're ready to go. I'm almost 90% ready to have Emily start looking at them and Travis. So thank you. I appreciate your accommodation. Thank you.
Yeah, everybody okay with that? All right.
Yes.
Yes.
Thank you.
No need to zoom in. So, okay, so now we are moving on to adjournment. Do we have a?
I'm hopeful you adjourn.
Okay, can I get a second? All those in favor, please raise your hand. Okay, any opposed? Meeting adjourned at 6:38.